Okay. The minutes of our last meeting on January 4th. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I have one minor drafting point. Jennifer, in the third paragraph, about six lines down, it reads, the sentence continues, "The NHRPZ proposed bylaw, realizing draft date of the HPZ uses density neutral. He did the second example following draft date." Do you mean the second example using density negative? I think there are words missing there. I think that's what, he showed us the two examples of density neutral and density negative.
Well, the first one, an example of density negative.
So-
Following draft date. He answered all questions.
Well, then, he did density negative, and then he did density neutral. But then, what is, he did the second example following draft date. What does that mean?
Well, he gave us two examples, and one example of each of them.
Yeah, but if the full sentence starts out saying he did an example of density negative.
So, Bill, I can't remember, did he have graphics?
Well, he had those two pieces of paper, which I don't know that I have with me. Each of the two examples of density neutral and density negative. I think, so he starts out by doing density, an example of density negative. Realizing draft eight uses density neutral.
I think that's what he said, that draft date, he said was density neutral.
It is, it is density neutral.
Okay.
But then, what does-
Why don't, why don't we just hold on the minutes and have Jennifer review the tape and revisit them at the next meeting?
Can you do that, please? Jennifer, is that asking too much?
Okay, I'm not really sure what you want to change, but-
The language I don't follow-
Okay.
-is after density neutral, draft date of the NHRPZ uses density neutral. The whole rest of the sentence, starting with, "He did the second example following draft eight." I don't quite get what that means.
Okay.
So, shall we defer action on this until the next meeting? I know it's a small point, but it's, I couldn't figure out what-
Yeah, it is a little confusing, yeah.
Okay. I mean, he did it, an example of density negative. I'll listen to the tape again, but-
Maybe if we said, realizing draft eight uses density neutral.
He did the second example following draft eight. I think it's the wording that I like.
So, after density neutral, comma, he did the second example of density negative. Maybe if that's inserted.
Okay, I'll listen to it, okay?
I think that's probably would clarify it, but we'll defer till next meeting.
Okay.
Was, were there documents that he handed out for that?
Yes. Yeah, there were two, two sheets.
Oh, oh, the worksheets, of course, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. With his, you know, his worksheets.
Right, right.
And one was negative and one was neutral. And I know we reviewed both, and I know that's what we're trying to get, what Jennifer is trying to get at here. I just couldn't quite get it the way it was written. I think if you insert of density negative after second example, it makes sense, but we'll defer it until the next meeting.
Okay. If the word, if the word worksheets, I don't have the minutes pulled up in front of me, but if the word worksheets is not in there, I would suggest including that.
It is in here.
It is in here. Going through the worksheets.
It is.
Great, thank you.
We can determine the number of dwellings.
Great, thanks.
Okay. We have a, an idea about flex parcel zoning from our select person, Patrick White. You've all seen the- Welcome, Patrick.
Hi, thank you.
Glad you're with us. Thanks for working on this, and please walk us through this and give us-
Hey. I made it horizontal to allow people to see what I'm talking about who are Zoom, so I'm sharing. Here we go. Can we see it?
Yes. Yes.
Excellent, I love when it works. So, when our zoning was written, the landscape, bad pun, sorry, was a little different than it is now. Both housing and land were a lot less expensive. Where we find ourselves now is ballooning construction costs. We're all seeing the inflation figures, and the Berkshires are even worse off than many think in the rest of the country. And of course, land and Stockbridge is prohibitively expensive. And what I've observed is that, while it wasn't the intention of our zoning, our zoning is encouraging the production of luxury, single-family homes, because really, nothing else is economically feasible. So, you know, I was trying to think of ways we could encourage homeownership that was affordable to more people, because, let's face it, you know, when we were kids, you know, the police force lived in town, now they live in Lee, you know, because they can't afford Stockbridge. And, and beyond that, you know, we've got, we've got a situation where, I believe, we're the second oldest community in the Commonwealth, you know? And it's interesting, there's a lot of research on, on housing and seniors. And if you do a survey, and I love the idea of a survey, but if you do one, something like 90% of the people respond that know they want to stay in their own home, and yet, 51% nationwide end up having to do something different when they have too much, too much home for what they can handle or what they want to handle. So, I didn't want to put forth anything that, that was anyway critical of single-family homes or critical of second homeowners. I think this community is big enough for a wide range of folks. At the same token, I think it's important that we start to think about ways to really focus on the human aspect of, of our town, and not just the natural and physical aspects. Because, you know, you know, it's, it's, you know, our residential population peaked in 1990 at 2,400. It's around 2,000 now. And went up a little bit because of COVID. It was, it was down in the 1900s last year. So, we got a lot of, we got a lot of room to get back to where we were, is what I'm saying. And, and, and I really, I really believe in Stockbridge as a community, and I just thought that, you know, what this really reflects is just thinking around how we, how we can incrementally, potentially, you know, create some incentives and give people more options on what they can do with their parcels. So, so, right now, we've got, you certainly can do two-family and three-family homes right now with our current zoning. It just takes more land. So, if you want to build a four, a home in our four, and you want it to be two-family, I believe you need an extra acre. And if you want to do three-family, you need an extra two acres per unit. So, what effectively says, and I'm sorry, I have my zoning book in there, I forgot to bring up the podium. But, you know, what you effectively have is you have a situation where those options are only available by special permit, and they require more land, and land is prohibitively expensive. So, what, my thought is this, at the same token, you know, a lot of us don't really want to suburbanize the town. We don't want to basically build three giant homes on one R4 parcel, because the rural nature and character of the town will suffer that way. So, what we look at here is, the basic idea is to make it as easy to build smaller two-family and three-family solutions as it is to build a single-family home, but limit the size in aggregate of what folks can build, so that, in effect, we're not, you know, encouraging sprawl. We're not really increasing density. We're simply saying, you know, I mean, look, we all permit these things. We're all on the boards after the permitting. You know, what do we got, 5,000 square foot here, 7,000 square foot here, 8,000 square foot here. Almost everything that comes to us is, of course, luxury, and then, you know, they could, if folks want a big house, good for them, but that's what we're seeing. So, in my, in my proposal, you've got a limit of about 4,500 square feet in the total area. So, if you want to do a three-family, you could split it up, but let's say divide by three, it's 1,500 square feet. I grew up a family of five in a 1,470-square-foot house. It's absolutely possible for folks with modest backgrounds like many of us have. And, and with a, with a two-family, you know, you could, you could go a little bit bigger. All this does is it gives landowners and homeowners more options and flexibility in terms of what they can build. And, and what I've tried to do, and I'm going to walk through some of the stuffs here, is balance competing desires. We want to maintain open space, but we also want to provide avenues to support and strengthen our community, and that's kind of where I'm coming from. All right. Now, I don't know how to go to the second page in Windows here. Okay, there it is. All right, so, reality check. Since, since our zoning was created, obviously, we've had massive shifts in both our community and the market. Our community's gotten a lot older. I think between 2010 and 2030, the number of kids at Berkshire Regional School District will cut in half, okay? All but with the price of land. As I said, our zoning encourages single-family homes. Cost of construction, same thing. When you, when you talk about, when you talk about single-family homes that are either contiguous or close together, you reduce construction costs. We talk about smaller homes, construction costs per square foot, you reduce construction costs. Few, few or none of the local single-family homes that are being built right now are affordable to middle-class families. I wonder if there are ways to provide potential revenue streams to homeowners that bring a mortgage within reach. Now, anybody who followed the Airbnb, the short-term rental debate last year knows I have some concerns about market makers coming in and acquiring houses at scale. Yeah, I got two calls in the last month from folks offering to cash-buy my property. These are like those big REIT firms, you know, real estate, investment trust. But I do believe that if a resident is managing an Airbnb that is next door to them, they're not going to let it get trashed. They're not going to let some party animals come in and like, you know, make go crazy. And I think one of, one of the things that something like this does is by having like, you know, rental income, you know, month-to-month, or, you know, I mean, like a lease or even short-term rental, you have a whole revenue stream that makes that entire mortgage for the two-family that much more affordable to a middle-class person. And all over the county, that's how people are buying houses. They're basically buying the two families so that they can rent one half and live in the other half, and the revenue stream for one basically pays most of the mortgage, and it makes the town like Stockbridge affordable. A lot of people would love to raise their kids here. I just feel like we, we can, we can, we should be thinking about ways to encourage that, you know? Finally, you know, as I said, you know, the same thing goes, you know, some, some seniors either will want to or will need to have significantly less house over time. You know, I, I think it's, I think it's sad when there's so few options in town for folks. And I'm not talking about building the new $20 million, you know, senior home for Stockbridge people. I don't think that there's a political will for that. But if we can encourage the market to build small units, then maybe that gives seniors who decide their 5,000-square-foot, eight-acre property that they own their whole life, maybe it gives them an option to at least stay in town, because the market builds something that makes sense for them. We all don't need it to be modest. Some of us, you know, some of you, maybe more than us, can afford a small, luxury, you know, single-family or contiguous condo, whatever it is. But that gives our 1,000 60-plus-year-old folks living in this town some more options than they have now, which I fully support. We, yeah, this is, we, we are not feeling it yet, but this is going to become absolutely, you know, a giant issue for us. And I don't like the idea of, of folks having to move to other towns when they're in their later years, just because they don't have options. Look, if you want to go to Florida or Beckett, you go for it. But, you know, I, I think it's, it would be good if our zoning reflected our, our kind of, you know, principles and priorities, I guess.
Patrick?
Yeah?
Sorry. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Do you want to finish before questions? How does this relate to the intentions behind the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
I think that we have to address housing in, in its entire continuum. So, you've got, you've got residential needs, you've got, you've got, you know, you've got this question there of short-term rentals, but, you know, well, I can tell you some things are going on, you know, specific to affordable housing. Affordable housing is, is a legal definition, which is subsidized housing, of which you have to be at or below a certain income level for your family to be able to qualify for it. Now, affordable housing can come in two forms. It can be rental, like we have at Pinewood's, or it can be homeownership, like Habitat for Humanity houses. So, in the case of, some, some things are going on right now is, I believe that, that, that construct that owns Pinewood's is going to come to CPC with a proposal to add some affordable units to Pinewood's.
Really?
By, we're gonna, we're gonna do a study. I think it's like a $25,000 proposal for CPC. I've worked, been working with them on it. I mean, you know, it's like, those units are coming up, and, you know, housing's one of the three buckets. So, I actually see a need for affordable housing. Now, another example of something we could do in this town is, there's a, there's a parcel down by Estonica West Stockbridge. It's eight acres. Its strata is West Stockbridge, it's in R1, but the West Stockbridge part, which is like three and a half acres, is R3. So, you might be able to do three or four units in there. And, and I've actually reached out to both Habitat and some private developers to see if, and it's really affordable, too. It's like only 115,000 for the whole parcel. You know, maybe that's something that we can encourage folks in that neighborhood to, to build a couple houses. You know, I'm not talking about like building, you know, you know, high-rise, you know, high-rise housing for, for people in need. I mean, you know, I believe there's a need for that. I just don't think it's going to happen in Stockbridge. But if we can build a few houses every year or two with Habitat, if we can look at ways to both improve the quality and the number of units at Pinewood's, I think those are really good things. And I've been trying to work on the whole landscape here. What I'm talking about really here is market forces-
Okay.
-for housing, not really affordable housing.
Got you, thank you.
Sorry, that was a long way to answer.
No, that's good.
So, I, look, I'm not a planner, okay? These are just my opinions, I just threw this stuff out here. I'm happy to just now, you know, this is something that, that good ideas come from a lot of people, and these are just some of the thoughts that I had in this next screen about, about issues, so that we don't have unintended consequences. All right. So, for example, you know, I don't want to have, personally, just my opinion once again, I would rather not see three houses spread over in our four lot and our R2 lot, because that's really R1 and a third, or R and two-thirds, or whatever the math is. You know, so I think that keeping the units together, whether it's contiguous or, you know, within a short distance from each other, if it's a, if it's a standalone single-family, is a really good idea, because that, that also concentrates the utilities, and all the costs of building go down when it's together. And by the way, you also protect more open space that way. So, this is not a proposal to basically, in effect, cut our zoning by a third. You know, our key part of this is, you know, look, I spent a lot of time last year working on the MVP process, on the climate stuff. And one of the things we have to do as a society is start to build smaller homes. So, this addresses that by saying, you know what? You can build whatever, you know, within the zoning. I know you can't build a billion-square-foot house, but, you know, I think that in our four, you could build something in the tens of thousands of square feet, and still maintain our zoning. With this, you're limited in aggregate to either mass or square foot, whatever you guys think would be the right number to use. But the idea is to not build McMansions in these spaces. This is meant to be modest, at least sized homes. Now, some of these units may be small and luxury. I'm not saying we should, we should try to manage or regulate that. People might build luxury in some instances, you know, depending on where the lot is. I think that the question of short-term rentals, now, the short-term rental part, I had a long conversation on this, several, with Don Abur, our town council. And one of the things we want to do is keep all of our short-term rental regulations in the general bylaws, not the zoning bylaws. So, we might have to figure, it might be two different things we'd have to look at, but, you know, one of the things that's important to me is I don't want to put this out there and then have someone say, "Great, I'm going to build three little houses and rent them on Airbnb." And I live in, in Thailand or New York City, and, you know, it's like, it's like these absentee owners scare the Jesus out of me. Part of that, you know? So, so, dealing with the question of short-term rentals, the formula for short-term rentals I'm most comfortable with is a resident who wants to be able to afford to live in the town, to raise their family, or retire, or stay here, or whatever, and has a unit next door that they're able to watch and manage. Everybody in town I know who does that, and there's a number of them I know of, does a successful one. And I think that that can be a real model to make these homes more affordable. I think, to be fair, you know, 50% of the units in town are non-conforming, okay? We have kind of weird zoning that way, that like, a whole lot of stuff got built, you know, organically, I guess, you know, without regulation, and then we put in place these regulations and literally half our homes, something. I don't think it's fair to that half of the town to say, "Oh, well, your lot's not two acres, so you can't participate even though you're in R2." If they, if they want to build something that's no bigger than what they have now, but they want to build two smaller units, I think that's great, you know? I think we gotta, you know, recognize that people have got to live somewhere, and we can get them to live in smaller homes, or have a smaller home, and with that, a place they can rent, I think that's, I think that's a fantastic solution. You know, I think that, you know, I put in some stuff about septic here. That's not something we need to regulate, title line regulates that.
Patrick, do you mind, do you mind enlarging your screen? I just have to say that this is not what was posted to the town website for your materials.
This is exactly where the word was, that these pages are.
Now, I think an earlier version of this was-
A different version?
You revised this.
I only, I only added the introduction slides, the first two slides, and I'm happy to share the presentation after the meeting.
Okay.
One, two-
I, I, I'm enlarging it, look at that, wait, hold on.
Okay, so, could I finish, please, Patrick?
You just interrupted me, but sure, go for it.
Bill, may I ask him a question?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, could you send this around to the planning board? It, it just looks to me like it's different from what was posted, what posted on the website and what Jennifer sent around.
I, I understand, yes.
It's, it's a lot to absorb here, and then I'll, I'll let you finish.
I mostly wrote this out, so I got through my own talk. This is mostly crib notes for me, not meant to be like a PowerPoint where it's usually three words and you rehearse. I didn't have a chance to rehearse, it was kind of busy. Anyways, you know, final issue that I think that we need to think about is for large parcels, you may want, at some point, if we're talking about potentially, you know, 50 or 100, 200 subdivided parcels, you might not want the scale both for aesthetic reasons, but also for the impact on the roads. I don't really think we want to take our two-lane roads and make them a four-lane road. The impact on, on water and sewer, I don't know if we could possibly grow to the point where that was relevant. I am certainly not talking about any specific parcels. I don't want to get into that debate. You know, all I'm saying is that it's a reasonable question, concern some people, folks are going to have. You know, look, I tried to make this as unobjectionable as possible. You don't want, you want open space, it limits footprint. You want families, you know, it creates affordability. You want options for seniors, you know? And I think that that's, I think it's important that we, that we, that we recognize that, you know, there are competing interests at stake here. You know, every time you add a family to town, you have a little bit less, you know, you know, green space, I guess, for every house you build. But I can live with that. I don't want, like I said, I don't want us to be suburbanized, but, you know, the human aspect of our community is, it was the most important thing to me when I ran, and it remains the most important priority in mine. Then finally, you know, now I'm going to do my little cell job. You know, there's a number of benefits that could be materialized. Wait, let me pinch it open, so it's a little bigger. We can preserve an option, the ability for homeowners to build within our existing zoning. This creates no new limitations on what is allowed in town. If the market wants to just build large, single-family homes, that's, that's that, you know? We're, yeah, we're either, we're either successful or victim of our own success. I don't know how, it depends on your thinking, but this isn't, this isn't meant to limit folks in any way. I just want to give people more options. I want to incentivize parcel owners or developers to build smaller units, better for the climate, it's better for the town. It's more likely what seniors will need. It's more likely what young families can afford. I want to give people enhanced flexibility to create market units that meet a variety of needs, and I think the town is and will, you know, the housing, I'm so impressed with Jay Bukowski and all the people who've gotten, Nancy, and all the, all the rest of the folks who have decided to participate in the, in the Housing Trust Fund project. We're going to, we're going to do a good job dealing with the affordable, I know it. But then we've got a workforce. That's really an area that many communities in the country are facing challenges, including Stockbridge. It has been suggested to me that, you know, live with it. Look at it as a regional thing, you know? You know, it's really not the worst thing in the world if someone commutes from Lee and works in Stockbridge, or if someone commutes in Great Barrington, from Great Barrington and works in Stockbridge, you know? And that there are, there are more of a variety, more variety of options for those folks. Personally, you know, every time I go to Hightown Hall, I get sad, because I remember playing, and I admit terribly, but playing Little League in that field, where there were three teams from Stockbridge, and now there's none. And, and I get what you're saying, and I think it could be that this is our lot now, and that, and that we can't affect, we can't attract another 25 or 50 families who might bring another 50 or 100 kids to town, or maybe we could be a little bit more like it was before. But I don't believe that. I think when you look at everything from our tax policies to our zoning policies, to what we encourage developers to build, we can move the needle, and we're not going to, if this, if something like this goes through, it's not going to just get built for like the teachers and the policemen, because some of it's going to be luxury. I can live with that, you know? I think that, I'm not at all against any members of our community. I just want to make sure that the full-time residential community survives, and that, you know, we don't end up being hollowed out by some of the successes in the, in the, in the, in the town and the region related to, you know, all the attractions. I think we can provide started homes for families or-
Patrick, oh, sorry, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure, of course.
You note here in this section, "Three smaller homes may sell at a higher per square, square foot price than a single-family home might." I, I, that may well be right, as you say. I wonder what the property tax implications of that kind of decision would be? Are property taxes likely to be higher collectively on three smaller homes than on one larger one on the same plot?
I think that, I think that, look, I think it's unlikely. We've got, what, 1,700 homes in, in Stockbridge? I believe that the census was like 1,794 or something. And then, and then, then there's fewer parcels, because there's multiple homes on some parcels, so the parcel versus home discussion, I don't, I don't know, I'm not an expert, I've encountered them. All I know is we're not going to build 1,000 of these, all right? I would be ecstatic if, if I waking up 10 years from now, I would love to wake up and if we got 50 of these units built, it would be a huge, huge success. If 30 of those were, were residences, and 20 of them, or half those were seniors who decide to stay, and half of those were people raising families, you know, that's how we move the needle. There's only 600 of these parcels that are residentially owned now. We don't have to have huge, giant amount of success to like, make a difference of 5% or 10%. five or 10%, or 15%. So...
I guess I'm, on the one hand, if, if property taxes on a, on a parcel with three houses were higher than on a parcel with one house, same size parcel, that's good for the town, not so good for the property owners for paying higher taxes.
Well, they're, you know, look, the state sets the algorithm for assessments. You know, the units are going to be taxed at what their last sale price is, is a lag of a year, but that's just the way it is. You know, and, and nobody, nobody wants to sell their house or own a home that is worth for less, just because they could have saved a few hundred dollars on their taxes. I mean, you know, I mean, let's face it, one of the great things for a home, a lot of the residents in this town, most of their net worth is tied up in their home. And, you know, this town, kudos to all the leaders, you know, before us, because this town has great and increasing property values, and that's pretty good. You know, I talked to a lady the other day in Glendale was saying how, you know, this is the thing she's leaving to her children, and she's so happy that, she can't believe what the prices are in Glendale right now, but this is what, she's so excited that she's able to give more to her children. So, you know, I, these are, you know, I, I don't know that there's an answer to that question. I also know that, like, you know, we have millions of dollars in free cash, you know, as, as, if you look at a piece of land versus a piece of land with one or two or three houses on it, we are collecting more taxes regardless of what gets built, you know, if something gets built. But that said, I don't think, I don't think tax revenue is, is really a significant part of the equation here. You know, the town's taking in more than enough tax revenue.
That's a good question.
Of course.
First of all, it's the housing, your taxes are based on your square foot of your living area. So if you have a smaller house, then it's smaller taxes. But conversely, you can build a duplex in Stockbridge by right now.
What?
You can build a duplex in Stockbridge by right now. A tripla, a house with three units in it, you're crossing...
Section 6.9 of the zoning.
You're, you're crossing two building codes there. Because it's a different code for a duplex than it is for a three-family home, so you're mixing two building codes.
A duplex with special permit planning board, a two-family.
So Nancy, you bring up a really good point, and, you know, thank you for your, for your interest, Patrick. I'm wondering if, I mean, it looks to me like our current zoning bylaw covers this, and I'm wondering if what we could do is, if we could all take a look at the relevant sections in our current zoning bylaw, that's the table of uses, and then the affordable housing definition, and so on. And then, you know, having that, just the way when we review special permits, you know, we start by looking at, I mean, not as a board, but at home, we start by looking at the, the relevant zoning wording. I'm wondering if, in considering this, we could start by looking at what's currently on our, our zoning bylaw books, and then have a frame of reference from which to work.
Sure, and I know that you've done that, and I know that I've done that, as we talked of.
I'm not finished, Patrick?
All right, now you're in the meeting.
Excuse me, I'm not finished. Could I finish, please?
You were finished, but sure, keep going.
Thank you. So, let's see, who's, who's in the room from the planning board? Nancy, Marie, and Bill?
Yep.
Okay, so, I'm looking at our...
Hey, hold on one second. The Select Board has the ability to put forth zoning bylaw proposals, just like the Planning Board does. It is state law and in our bylaws, okay? If you want to take shots, take shots, but don't take them in vain.
Patrick, I'm just, I don't think she was... Trying to talk to the board, I'm not taking a shot at you. Are you putting this forth as, as the entire Board of Select Board, or I thought you were just bringing this to us for a discussion?
I'm saying that there's, I haven't talked about, to my colleagues about this, because it's against the law, we haven't had a meeting, so...
So this is just an idea for now, right?
All ideas are ideas for now, yes.
Right, okay, so, well, why don't you finish your presentation, and then, Bill, if I may, I'd like to just, you know, talk to the board a little bit.
Sure. This is not allowed in our current zoning. You cannot, and first of all, like I said at the beginning, I'm not, I'm not a builder, building codes. I hope there's a way, if, that if we decide what we want to create incentives for, that we can figure out the processes and regulations that we need to ensure, for example, three-family versus two-family. You need more land to build three families than one, than single families in this town. That's just the reality, it's section 6.9 of our zoning bylaw, all right? On two families, you need a little bit more land, and you need a special permit, which creates this incentive, so people don't think of it that way. And, and, and the idea that, like, on non-conforming lots, you could build two smaller homes versus the same-size rebuild of the larger home that you have, well, you can't do in our current zoning bylaw. This is significantly different.
Can I just ask, Patrick?
Yeah, and, but, and now I'm done with the presentation.
Question, I know that this is just an idea, and you're trying to get across this idea to us, and not the details, but in your mind, are you thinking that this needs a revision of the zoning, excuse me, a revision of the zoning bylaws? I mean, is that, that's what you're thinking would accomplish this? By just revising the bylaws we have? Different sizes, different amounts of space you need to do with two-family, three, I mean, is that, was that your thought? We were just going to revise?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'll make a final point.
To make it whatever we decide?
We would need to change the bylaws to accommodate this. And, you know, this is one other thing, you know, different generations have different, different thoughts on what, what, what form and structure and priorities and, and rules should govern decisions, for example, on what you could build. You know, I want to make sure our zoning is inclusionary and not exclusionary. And you ask a lot of people who don't live in Stockbridge about our zoning, professionals, for example, people at, you know, people at Construct, or people at, I mean, I saw Andrew was on the call, she could comment on this. We don't create incentives for working-class people. And I don't think any of us did that on purpose, you know? It's just, it was easier when, when my dad bought in 1960, it was easy to buy a house here, because it was cheap. It's not that way anymore, and I think we have to really think about how we incentivize to include a whole spectrum, you know, of folks who can, who are able to live in our town.
So you're just thinking this can be accomplished by revising the bylaws, depending on what is decided about your ideas? Nothing in your head now is saying, "This is what we have to do with the zoning." You're just saying, "Let's decide what we want to do."
Right.
And then, "Let's look at the zoning and make it possible."
That's exactly...
Is that your idea?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, I think that, you know, I didn't, I'm an incrementalist, you know? I really think that, like, we have to, you're doing things that are modest, that incrementally address some of the issues that we have, is the best way to go, because that gives us a chance to see if it was like, a good idea or not, you know? You know, I'm not, I get worried even with good ideas, if they're sweeping in scope. You know, it's not, I'm not talking about getting rid of R2 or R4, I'm not talking about anything like that. You know, I think that we need to, if we, if we figure out a way to say, "You know what, small homes is really great for families and for seniors," that's maybe a way that we could put a couple of, a couple of homes on a large parcel that otherwise would only support a single family. I think that's like, really kind of a, a really interesting way to tie kind of some of the, the larger issues of, of our zoning to really trying to specifically address the human needs the town is going to have.
So decide what we want, and then talk about the bylaws, how you can change...
And I think between Michael...
Change the bylaws we have to make it work.
I think between Jeff and the new woman that Michael loves from, Michael has a lot of respect for, I should say, from Regional Planning, and Michael and Donna, I'm happy to let them write the bylaw at the end.
I just wondered how you were going to...
I just wanted to give you ideas in this, I didn't want to kind of come in with the legalese, you know?
Okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Kate, do you still want to say something?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, I'd sort of like to, Patrick, can you turn off the screen share, please?
Oh, sure. Stop, screen share. I just have to, um, let's see, let's see.
Figure out how, it's not the easiest.
I think maybe it's escaped?
There we go.
You're good.
Oh, it's off, okay.
Yeah, and then I just wanted to, a couple of comments I have, so I'm going to share my screen. Steve, can you enable sharing?
I can maybe go co-host, because I'm a co-host.
Okay, go ahead.
Let, let Steve do it, thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Steve is at another meeting, he asked me to help if he didn't respond, just so you know.
Go ahead, Kate.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, so Patrick, in your, your summary here, another, you know, first of all, just a suggestion, just a, you know, light suggestion, I'd recommend that you sign your name up top, so people know where this is coming from.
I think my name was on the agendas, but okay.
Well, this is a document that's posted to the town site, so I think, you know, that's just a suggestion. When you say that there is no limit to the size these homes may be, but they must be single-family, that's not, if you look at our table of, at our zoning bylaw, you'll see that there, there actually are limits.
Of course there are limits, yes. It's an exaggeration, you can, you can, you can't build a house bigger than our four, what, 30,000, 40,000 square feet?
Well, there's, there's, there are setback limits, and then there are, there are limits in terms of, hold on, let me just...
I understand, we understand that, I will give you, I will give you that one, it was an exaggeration. There are some limits, they are way beyond what anyone's building. You know, if you own more than five acres, you can build eight, 10,000 square feet and not run out of gas.
Basically, if I may, you know, depending on the, the zone, for example, you know, there are the setbacks, but then for the, the R4, R2, and R1 zones, the maximum, maximum lot coverage by building is 10%. And, so, you know, so that's one comment I have.
Do you want me to address them, or you want me to wait?
I'd like you to wait, please. And then the other, the other thing that I was sort of perplexed by was the idea that this would, it seems to me that if you're interested in smart growth, you would actually apply this to, you know, to the areas, like, to the RC, the Business District in the R1. To me, it seems like the character of the town is inherently tied to this idea of focusing your density downtown, and main, you know, maintaining the rural outskirts, undeveloped open-space outskirts. And, you know, in terms of incremental growth, I'm wondering if you can, you know, if you develop a bylaw where this is, you know, applied across the board, how does, can you tell me how that relates to incremental growth?
Sure. I think, it's been pointed out to me that this might work in R1. I think that, you know, an acre is of what, 43,000 square feet? So in R2, you've got 86,000 square feet, 10% of the footprint is 8,600 square foot home. That is bigger than anything we permitted, we permitted some pretty large homes around here lately. Yeah, so, as you get down to the, our, our one, you know, it's 43,000 square feet, you want to, you know, put three homes on there?
They don't.
I was a little bit, let me finish, I was a little bit worried about whether neighbors might think that was a little bit too much density in what are already our densest neighborhoods. That said, I think this is a great idea, and I would have no problem making it available throughout the town. You know, so if you want, if you, if you think it could work in R1, great, you know? I, I think, I think that you, you look at that, 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 that parcel I was talking about earlier, down on 183, that's five acres in Stockbridge in R1, I like the idea of building five homes, maybe together, 15 homes on five parcels, where there's mostly single families? I think that might be perceived as changing the character of the town. But I don't know, I'm not suggesting the decider, no George Bush here, you know?
Kate, anything else?
No, not really, just back to my comment to the board, not to Patrick, but just that my recommendation for, you know, any next step, if anybody else wants to take a next step on the board with this, would be to, would be to, that we all, you know, review the relevant sections in the existing bylaw, and, and take that as a first step.
Kate, would you say that again?
Yeah. Who's that, Marie?
Yeah, I didn't quite understand what you were saying.
I'm sorry, I'll try to be more clear. My suggestion is that if the rest of the board wants to discuss this further, my recommendation would be that we all, you know, review the relevant sections in the existing bylaws, zoning bylaw, and then, you know, take it from there, because I actually feel that our existing bylaw does address this, and in some ways, I think that it addresses it better in the, in that it, you know, it defines affordable housing, and it allows for the character of the town by requiring a little bit more land for a bit bigger impact.
Thank you. Thank you.
Look, if, if, if the property won't perk, you're not going to be able to build six or eight bedrooms on it. So, right there, you've got, and this is a wet town, so, right there, you've got some limitations to where this will be applied. I think the Title V covers those impacts, and I think that other than that, why is the town better off building a 7,000-square-foot house, and I know two of them we permitted in the last few years, than three 1,500-square-foot homes for, like, seniors or the upper ones? That's just my opinion. But, you know, I think a great next step on this would be for you guys to, to work with Michael and the new planner at Berkshire Regional, to, to actually do a professional evaluation of, of this versus what is existing, and, and have them come back, yeah, we got, we appropriated the money, like, let's spend some of it to get these answers and get them in a sort of non-political way, by having the professionals do the analysis, you know?
So, Bill, I do have one sort of question, comment, maybe you can help out here.
Go ahead.
And that is, I talked to Mike last week, we were talking about the fountains, and he had mentioned, maybe it was longer than that, that he was going, going to be coming to the planning board soon over the accessory dwelling units, and that the planner had been working on those, working on that, and that there are some sort of interesting findings that she, she had made. And so, I'm wondering if you have any information on that, and if Mike is coming to a planning board meeting soon, because it seems to me like, you know, we're just taking on, you know, maybe we could be a little bit more orderly about what we're addressing here at the planning board, and since we've been working on the accessory dwelling units, we're paying for that, maybe we should have an update on that, and maybe that will sort of help us decide next steps here.
I can certainly invite Mike to, and the planner, whom I've never met, to our next meeting. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. I mean, do you have any information about, you know, where that, that is at right now, or not really?
I do not, I've not spoken with either one of them, the planner or Mike, about this.
Okay, so just so you know, and I don't, you know, I may not have this accurate, but it sounded to me like there were some, you know, some issues, and some of those issues, you know, with the implementation of ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and some of those issues might actually, actually relate to this sort of idea, and they have to do with, you know, market forces and so on, and, you know, what you can control with a project, and for how long you can control it. Like, you know, if somebody does an ADU, you know... you know, can they use it as a short term, what can the town, what say does the town have as to whether they eventually then use it as a short term rental?
Yeah. I think, Patrick, your idea about, you know, bringing Michael and the planner in on this to analyze this idea in, in the context of what's already in the zoning bylaws, which is Kate's point, is a good idea. I think we should invite, and I will invite Mike and the planner to our next meeting.
Thank you. And thanks for listening. You know, it may be a good idea, maybe a bad idea. It just, you know, I think that, I think our goal is to just, you know, keep exploring ways that we can take a great town and make it even a little bit better.
Thank you, Patrick. Thanks very much. Are there, before you step away, just, I know there's some members of the public on this call or on this meeting. Are there any questions from anybody zooming in for Patrick?
Definitely from Carol.
Go ahead.
Carol, what's your last name?
First, I really.
You're supposed to say your full name when you speak. Carol Owens, yes.
Um, first to thank Patrick, he seems to come with such love and good ideas all the time, and thank you very much. But I'd like to start where Patrick started. The first thing he did was point out that due to market forces, we are in a place in Stockbridge that none of the original planners were trying to reach. That the market takes over. And I think with this idea, another thing Patrick said, this is what people want, what workforce people want, what seniors may want, that it's a desirable thing. And I don't think it looks like an idea that will fit in and encourage and allow us to have workforce, the police, the teachers, the whatever, because I think the market will take over. And I think, folks, as much as I respect the job you do and recognize how hard you all work, I'm not sure zoning is stronger than market forces. So I think this is an idea that exactly as Patrick said when he first opened, will create a situation that was never intended. And I think, one last sentence, and I'm not projecting or predicting that, I'm just looking across the street at attached houses in a row, 1,700 square feet, two bed, two bath, the perfect starter home for workforce, and they are selling for between $500,000 and $700,000 each.
And is that not a bigger variance property that is, that is going for that? Just kidding.
And kidding isn't going to change the.
The town is not a property that butts the bull or prospects a room. We have the Mass Pike that goes through the town. Okay, there's a whole lot of parcels in this town that are never going to be attractive to the folks who want to, who want to have a second home here and who have the means to have a.
Patrick, that's what everyone said about church, North Church, Sargent, and the piece of Main Street between the end of what is downtown Stockbridge and the road to Lee. That will all.
I totally agree with you, Carol, that these are vaccine issues that are going to really take some creative thinking and hard work to address. I've had some folks, someone told me, actually, I think it was in a public meeting, I don't remember who it was, it's like, you know, we gave up on that 20 years ago, thinking. I haven't given up on this. And if the market is going to do what the market's going to do, then we get past this zone, this, this idea, and it won't have any impact on the town, if you believe we're going to still just build large McMansions on single family lots. Okay, but.
Well, I don't think we have any idea what.
I think that we think, we have examples. Talk to folks in, talk to the Stockbridge House, talk to Andrea about this. She can give you specific examples of people who have built two families and rent half of it out, and that's how they afford their mortgage. It's not, this is not like, you know, we're not like, we're not discovering the atom here. I mean, this is not, you know, this is not Patrick's come up with a really great idea. People are already doing this elsewhere. I'm just trying to kind of bring it here.
So you're not creating restrictions, you're just offering options.
That's right.
So, Bill, can we move on to the next agenda? It's now 7:30.
Yeah, just one second. Is there anybody else from the public who wants to make a comment or ask a question of Patrick? Okay.
I mean, I mean, I'm on the, I'm on the board, so.
Well, you can say anything.
Public.
What would you like to say?
No, I just, I just, I just actually, I mean, you know, what is the status of the, of the Stockbridge Affordable Housing Committee? Because I don't know. I mean, I think they've been very active and productive in the past, and I feel like, you know, the creating of, you know, affordable housing, which is obviously, you know, a goal that we're discussing here, you know, I mean, is, 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 is a conversation that I'm not sure that the planning board is specifically equipped to deal with, but, but, you know, although I think it's.
Barney's here. Carl, Barney, is he? I think Barney knows a lot about it.
Well, Barney.
Well, actually, the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust is on. Jay, do you want to say anything in response to Carl? Let's keep it brief because I don't want to.
No, I just, I'm just, I'm just, excuse my ignorance. I'm, I'm kind of like trying to catch up here, so.
Can I make a quick statement, Mr. Chairman? At the next planning, at the next Housing Trust meeting, a Housing Trust declaration will be drafted, i.e. what the purpose of the Housing Trust Committee will present. So that's where we're at.
Listen, that's great to hear, because I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know that, you know, this particular board is going to sort all this stuff out, but I mean, you know, we, we, we really need to be talking.
No, they, they. Okay, Jay, you were, you were admirably brief, and I appreciate it. So.
And with special.
Andrea, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to offer some support for, for Patrick. He had sent me this. We discussed it, you know, briefly. I did think it was a really good idea. I know I participated in the climate group as well, where we discussed topics like this, and that the town is really looking for families to move back to the area. And I think that two, two families and three families, a small neighborhood in the right location, and if changing the zoning helps with that, I hope that everybody investigates it to its fullest. Be sure if it is something you can do. There's a lot of things you can do. You can incentivize builders to participate in this. Maybe so many homes are set aside for affordable. Section 8 even has a program, the Housing Choice Voucher, where they will pay a portion of somebody's mortgage. And the Stockbridge Housing Authority does have the contract for vouchers with HUD. There's just a lot of different avenues that could be investigated. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for comments. Again, Patrick, thanks for your presentation. Some interesting ideas. The next topic or agenda item is how to proceed with the Cottage Era State Bylaw. At the last meeting, when we decided to no longer work on the Natural Resource and Historic Preservation Zoning Bylaw, Jeff Lacy's draft, which we had been looking at for many months, we did agree that as a separate matter, we should consider whether to take a fresh look. In fact, we agreed to take a fresh look at the Cottage Era State Bylaw that exists in the bylaws today in section 6.6, and at perhaps elements of the draft that Jeff had done months ago, back in March of last year, which was sent around by Jennifer a little while ago, and see if there are elements of that that may or may not make sense as part of any revisions we may want to make to the Cottage Era State Bylaw. I think that's a fair statement of where we wanted to go. Unfortunately, we're missing two of our members today, and I, first of all, I don't think we, we have the time or frankly are prepared to start going line by line through either of those documents, although soon I think we, we should do that. We should read those documents and, and begin to be ready to talk about the, what we like and don't like about the, particularly the existing bylaw, and what changes, whether they're from Jeff or from ourselves, we might want to suggest as revisions. But I don't think we can do that tonight, particularly because we've got, you know, two members missing, and I'd like to have a full slate of the membership when we do get into discussing the bylaw in particular. Is that, does that make sense?
Yes.
Sure, absolutely. I just, I want to just remind, I don't know that anyone really took note, much note of this, but, you know, the, the, the late zoning bylaw review essentially ended up, you know, recommending that we just drop the Cottage Era State Bylaw, you know, as being, you know, too complicated and too problematic. From my own sort of just personal point of view, and I'm not even talking about it from a sort of legal or planning framework, but I mean, it just seems like a response to, you know, to a situation that existed in, you know, a generation ago. And, you know, it is, it is, it does speak to, you know, what, what's possible in large parcels. I, I just don't know whether, like, you know, even our, like, existing, you know, cluster zoning, you know, could possibly, you know, essentially duplicate what, what's proposed there. I mean, there are definitely, definitely different, different, definitely different uses and so forth, but it just, it just seems like, you know, a solution for a problem that might not really be that pressing.
I think that's a question, and I think it's the kind of thing that ought to come up when we actually dig into it. I mean, it's been.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I don't need, I don't want to divert the conversation here.
It's been, gee, the better part of two years since that recommendation was made, and I don't know about you, but I haven't spent a lot of time on this bylaw or Jeff's draft of it in many, many months. So I think we all need to refresh ourselves, and it may be that.
I, I totally agree with you.
Yeah, that we want to make major changes, or leave well enough alone, or do something else. I think that's what we're, what we, what we need to do as we address this.
I think also one of the things is, you know, I mean, we've been pursuing some big kind of overhaul ideas on our bylaws, and, and I actually feel like, you know, the things that, like, you know, just as a civilian, you know, I've, I've voted for at town meetings have been, you know, sort of tweaks, you know, to things, you know, sort of adjustments and, and revisions. And, and, and I feel like that's something that, you know, if we can, you know, focus on, 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 on making, you know, our bylaws, whatever, smarter, tighter, whatever they need to be, that, that's something that we could possibly, you know, get by a town meeting and like, you know, and, and build some support for. You know, if, if the planning board says this is a good idea, you know, people will, the people, people may vote for it, you know, but, but I mean, it's just, but I mean, but I think it's, I think it's the details.
Bill, I, I also, I second Carl's, I agree with Carl's comments. We did do, as part of the zoning review committee work, we reviewed the Cottage Era State Bylaw not only as a committee, but then two members did a deep dive on it, and I think that was John Hart and Bob Jones. And we did recommend rescinding the bylaw. It just, you know, it just is something that it was drafted in a different time. We didn't have these, you know, these massive resorts. It was drafted with the idea of an historic property could be, you know, just sort of a beautiful old country inn. And that was the idea, and things are different now. Things do change, but it, it seems like, you know, this, this idea of a resort development in a neighborhood is not taken to consideration the character of the town and, and the quality of life for, for residents. So I, I would agree with Carl's, Carl's comments, and I think that, you know, we've actually, I was thinking about it today, we've actually now reviewed five bylaws, essentially for that desist of property. At one meeting, I think Gary's not here, but he would remember it. Marie, you were there. We actually, we actually were presented with two bylaw revisions. It was total confusion. One of the lawyers afterwards told me, she said, I couldn't keep it all straight. So, you know, my feeling is it's kind of time to pull the plug, but of course, you know, let's, yes, let's wait till Gary and, and Wayne are here, and let's, let's keep talking about it.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's the planning board's responsibility, with all respect, not John Hart's and Bob Jones's to do this. I think we have, we have an obligation, we have an obligation to.
I didn't say it was their responsibility. I didn't say it was their responsibility. I referenced their work.
Fair enough. Are there any other comments, questions, other business? If not.
Motion that we adjourn.
I did, I did just want to lightly touch on the, I've been attending the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission meetings every month for the executive committee. Anybody can attend those, and they're a wealth of information, and you can't speak because it's an executive board meeting, but they touch on everything from their budget to what's going on with the school, what's going on with COVID, how they're treating that, with the trains going back, you know, all that transportation stuff, and it's just, I've got so many notes that I just get carried away with, like, oh my God, I should tell everybody, but there's way too much. But I really encourage anybody to go on. It's the first Thursday of every month at 4 o'clock. And it's just, and it's fun. They're respectful of one another. The meeting lasts an hour. They, they even have on their agenda what time each item is going to be spoken at, spoken to, addressed. And it's, it's really interesting, and I think we should all go.
I, I think in your role as our delegate or representative, whatever the term is, I think it would be useful, thank you for saying this now, if after each meeting, you could maybe present us with one or two of the high points of the meetings you've participated in, because I can tell you, I might tune in occasionally, but I won't be as faithful as you will. And I suspect that's true of most of the rest of us. So if, I don't think you want to, we want you to regurgitate an hour's worth of material, but.
It's exciting.
I see you've got a lot of notes. Maybe pick one or two items that really struck you at the most recent meeting and talk to those.
Sure.
For 10 minutes.
Yep. I would, I would also value updates, Nancy, but more as if there's discussion that relates to or impacts Stockbridge, that would be, would I be interested to hear about.
Okay.
I, I have to say, when I was rough, it really is very interesting. It's worth listening. I mean, when I was on, they didn't do Zoom, so you had to like go, you know, but now it's so much easier with Zoom. It really is interesting. Some more than others, you know.
And they're all very respectful of each other, and, yeah, and.
Yep.
Boom, boom, boom.
And they're all very respectful of each other, and yeah, and boom, 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 they're done.
And people from all over the county, people from all over the county, from Dark Adams to Sheffield.
Each town.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, thank you. We had a motion and a second, all in favor of journey. Thank you all. Thank you, Jennifer.